And as soon as Jen walks in.
(laughing).
Excuses. All right, so call to order the meeting of the planning board, April 17th, 2018. So the first thing we have on our agenda is a proposed executive session regarding Mass General Law Chapter 38, 21A, reason number three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation varsity wireless versus North Andover Planning Board. This is the cell tower that was before us.
So I make a motion to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation varsity wireless versus North Andover Planning Board because being an open session would be detrimental to the town's interests.
And as a chair, I agree then, and I would state that having an open discussion would be detrimental to our litigation strategy. So if we get a second on that?
A second now.
Okay, so we need to do a roll call vote, so everyone needs to vote, so why don't we start with?
John Simons votes to go into executive session.
Jennifer Loz, vote in favor of executive session.
Aaron Preston, in favor of executive session.
Peter?
Peter Boynton, in favor of executive session.
Eitan Goldberg, I also vote in favor of going into executive session, so with that I would ask everyone other than council and town staff members to leave.
All right, back into open session. We are now going to talk housing.
So let's talk housing.
Okay. Angela Cleveland is here from the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission. In your packet was a draft of the housing production plan that has been worked on for some time. The process here, just as a reminder, we started a kickoff meeting about last June with key stakeholders, that we reached out to each of the boards and commissions in town, asked them to identify a stakeholder, and had a public forum, similar to the public forums we've had for the master plan. That was in June, and we had a second one, I believe, in November of this past year, to review, very similar path in terms of existing conditions, our needs, our goals that could meet those needs, and strategies to attain those goals. So we're at the point now where we have drafted the document. Angela's here to present really key findings of that document. And we also have Eric Halverson from the master plan consultant team. The timing actually worked out really well because we just came out of our second public forum for the master plan, where, again, in your packet, you have some summary comments from the public forum related to housing, as well as the online survey that we put up right after the public forum. The survey was really well received and responded to, so we had 200 responses to that survey, very detailed responses, so a matrix was provided with all those comments. I will say, in my opinion, I think the two documents are really aligned in terms of the goals and what we felt were the needs and what we heard from the public. But as you see in the strategies and the survey results, we talked a little bit at the last meeting how this is the one chapter of the master plan that we found, you know, just a little bit diverse in terms of strongly agree to certain goals and strategies versus strongly disagree. And so we're at a point now to really open up that discussion and hope to have some of your input related to this topic.
Thanks, Dean.
So you're already casting, good?
Yes.
Okay.
And thank you for having me tonight. Again, for the record, Angela Cleveland, I'm the Senior Economic Development Planner for Merrimack Valley Planning Commission and the lead on this project with a series of team members from Merrimack Valley Planning Commission. Looks like our presentation got a little messed up, sorry. So just a little background of us, again, almost 60 years old, working with 15 communities, cities and towns around the region, starting around the Methuen, Andover area, all the way up to Newbury Port, Salisbury. We are primarily funded through grants and some contracts that we have through federal, state, and local governments here in the region. And we're governed by a board of commissioners, so there's two commissioners from North Andover on our board. And we meet monthly to talk about policy and, you know, how we're going to be serving the local governments in our region. And right now we have 15 staff members that range from transportation planners to environmental planners, economic development like myself, and then I'll host a couple of GIS folks that help us with our mapping and our IT. So this project was the first of its kind in the region, and also in the state, to develop a regional housing plan for our region, for the Merrimack Valley, that identifies various strategies that help to develop housing, affordable housing, housing for all. Each of the chapters is going to be a housing production plan that is certifiable by the state for each community, except for Georgetown. They opted to do their own plan as they, it kind of happened as we were starting this project, so. But every other community is going, we're actually going, attending every planning board meeting that we can that wants to have us to present the strategies and the process for this plan. And we received some funding from the state, actually three different agencies, community compact funding, district local technical assistance, and mass housing. And we started about a year ago. It's actually only been about a year, which it feels a lot longer because we've, there's been so many facets to this project. But a year's not too shabby considering we're writing 14 individual plans and a regional housing plan. So we've engaged a variety of different stakeholders. I think the numbers are in the 400s, 400 to 500s of people, not just in person, but also through an online tool called Co-Erbanize. And this was at no cost to North Andover. So as I mentioned, the three funding sources were used to supplement this project. And it will be a regional housing plan with strategies, not policy-related, more things like helping to develop model ordinances, working with, developing a shared services coordinator for housing. And we're almost done with the strategies on that, so that housing, that piece of the regional housing plan will be released in May through another regional open house, where we're hoping to invite the governor, since, as you know, this is a very big concern for him through the new housing choice initiative, which I believe you're applying to get funding for. Great. Awesome, good luck. I think it's deadlines next week. So this is really good timing for a regional planning agency like ours to be addressing this because it's a huge priority of his and comes with lots of different funding sources. So just to remind you again what a housing production plan is, the five-year roadmap, so that it goes, it'll begin this year as soon as it is adopted. And then over a five-year process, we're hoping that various strategies will be adopted to help you achieve 10%, which is the ultimate goal for affordable housing. And those are units that are on the official subsidized housing inventory for the state. And it outlines a variety of needs. There were a lot of data, I don't know if you remember from the last time, there's going to be some data here tonight as well, not much. And then strategies for how to address those needs that were identified through the data collection and through community input as well. And we have a three-prong approach, lot of public engagement, as I mentioned earlier, so I'm not going to go through that again, but in addition to working with you guys, a lot of, two public workshops that were pretty well-attended down here at the adult center, the senior center, and regional open houses, and then online engagement to make sure that those folks that can't come or don't want to come to a public meeting can still express their voice. We worked closely with RKG, with Eric, back and forth. In fact, we kicked off their, or helped them kick off their project with, for the master plan, to really look at what we'd done to date, you know, what types of data was, what was being collected so that things weren't overlapping in a negative or conflicting way, but rather in a complementary way. And after seeing the strategies, I was really excited to see how well that they overlapped and that the data was really, between the two agencies, that the data was really meeting up. So very excited to, and that's just one example, many of our other communities, same thing, where they were going through master planning efforts, and we made sure that there was alignment between those efforts. And then lots of data collection and interviews, discussions with yourselves, with planning boards, making sure that we're not just using data as the primary source, but also anecdotal stories and things like that where we can collect data to make sure that it's really, we are truly meeting the needs of the region. So each plan, so North Andover specifically in this case, includes an introduction, kind of a background, if you will, methodology, a needs assessment, which is comprised of both a section called demographic profile and housing condition. So there's not a section called needs assessment, but it's wrapped into those two pieces. Housing development considerations, which looks at your environmental constraints. We're trying not to call them constraints because sometimes they can be complementary to housing as well, so open space, your historic preservation and just historic and cultural resources, transit or transportation options, sewer and water. So those were all analyzed to make sure that they weren't conflicting in or somehow constraining the housing development. And then your goals and strategies in an appendix, which includes extra data and some things that are required by the state that don't really belong in the main part of the document, but pretty short and sweet. So if any of you had come to one of the regional open houses, we focused on five big themes that the data on the regional scale was telling us, but I think that they're, they actually are really speaking well to what's happening locally as well, what we're hearing from, again, the data and in these community workshops. The first around the need for seniors to both age in their house, in their, where they're actually physically located, as well as their community. And we're hearing that again through data as well as anecdotally. More need for rental housing, and we'll see the numbers in a couple of minutes specifically for North Andover, but on average, we're about 63% ownership and 27%, excuse me, 37% rental here in the region, which is on par with the rest of the, both the county and the state, where we're seeing higher numbers in ownership across the region, unfortunately. So we're trying to see if we can kind of marry those two into more the half and half to basically meet the needs and what we're hearing from people who want to rent. They don't necessarily want to own right away, especially millennials or seniors moving out of their existing homes. A lot more diversity in the housing options, so that this includes multifamily, congregate areas, you know, homes where people can live together, group homes, this includes seniors as well, places to transition, as well as housing that's accessible for the disabled and seniors. And then rehabilitation of older homes, we have an older housing stock in this region, some areas, some communities, I should say, are older than others, not as much of a concern in North Andover, but those houses, both for, to keep them on the market, you know, on the tax rules, but also to be able to rehab them for seniors or disabled folks are of concern, so that we don't have to necessarily perch, excuse me, develop new housing, we can actually rehab our existing stock if we are conscious about that and put some time and hopefully funding into that. And then ownership opportunities that are affordable, so starter homes, for instance, or smaller homes, right-sized homes, we call them, and you might see that in the strategies in the back of the document. And stop me if I'm going either too fast or if you have questions about any of this. So hopefully these look familiar. We ended the last presentation to you in November with these themes specifically for North Andover. So this is what the data was telling us, was that there were going to, it anticipated population and households increasing, and it would, both historically from 2000 to 2015 and then projections. The compositions of your households are changing, the household size is going down, small percentage or decrease, but more single-person households. So that means that even if, as the population is increasing, the demand for housing is also going to be more because the housing, people are spreading themselves a little thinner. Their, the housing composition isn't two, three, and four family persons, it's one person in each home. Not, obviously not on the whole, but it's increasing. This is a trend across the region, and we just talked, we just talked about this, the need for elderly housing or housing that is, that accommodates elderly needs, and that that population is anticipated to grow by 50% through 2035. And that your younger population is actually estimated to decline, and that's under 18s or under 17, I believe it is. More owners than renters, we talked about this earlier, and I'll have a chart on that. And then the affordability gap is larger for what people can afford based of the median sales price versus what their median income is. So this was the most recent data, this is most recent data, I should say, from Mass Housing Partnership, talking about on the whole in the Boston area that there's 44,000 units short of demand, and that's without adding any new people or any new jobs right now. And how that relates to this region is about 4,900, actually, I should say Essex County is about 4,900 units. The healthy vacancy rate for rental housing is 6% and 2% for ownership. And right now, North Andover is at 2.5% ownership rate and .7, not 7%. So below the averages of what's considered healthy for vacancy rate, which obviously then raises prices and demand for those units that are actually on the market. So these are important.
For an owner?
Housing that's available for ownership.
So it's on?
For sale.
For sale, okay.
Yeah, sorry. Yep.
And how is the 4,900 units for Essex County, how is that number determined?
Mass Housing Partnership uses a variety of different, they're, I'm not sure, I, we didn't pull these numbers together, so I think they're looking for, you know, they're looking at Craigslist and other things that are available on the market, you know, at complexes. I think they use Warren Group data probably, I don't know if you've used or have heard of Warren Group data, but it's a paid fee, a system that you can pay into that talks, that crunches numbers on a very, very detailed level. So that, I believe that those are all things that go into this, and then obviously the census as well. So they use a variety of different sources. It's their, it's Mass Housing Partnership and what's the other one, Donahue Institute, that work together to kind of formulate a lot of this data, so it's hard always to know what's, what's the exact background of some of these, but, but I can look into that if you want to know the exact pieces.
I was just curious how that number is determined, because it, well, it does figure into the overall plan, it's a very, I think it's a very important number.
Yeah, definitely, definitely. And then I mentioned the age distribution on the theme slide, so here, the important pieces of this would be the 2015 column and the 2035 column, where we're seeing that the 65 and older population is going to go from 14% in 2015 to a projected 26% in 2035. And then I'd mentioned that younger populations were projected to decrease, so we're looking at below, below five years of age, and then 20 to 34 are down about 18%. So we're seeing some reductions and decreases in those age cohorts for those folks, based again on the, on the American Community Survey data. And this is again your rental and owner, the apologies when we, I guess when you recast some things disappear on the top of the slide, but this is your owner versus rental, so your tenure rate and North Andover is at, I suppose it was 72% ownership and 34, 24% rental. So, and then compared to Essex and Massachusetts, it's, and the state, I should say, it's down a little bit, or up a little bit.
73 and 27.
Thank you, 73 and 27. So yours is better than mine.
Were short-term rentals somehow calculated into that?
No, these are for full-time units, so vacation units wouldn't, aren't calculated into this.
Do you guys have any, I mean, sort of off-topic, but any thoughts on how the kind of the trend towards short-term rentals is affecting? It seems like, to me at least, that people may not be renting out units for year-long residences where you can do short-term rentals, especially with Airbnb and things like that.
Yeah.
Just how that's a kind of, is that something you guys have noticed in the region or have looked at?
We haven't, but there are some of our, some of the communities in the region, our Newbury Port being the big one right now that we know of, but we're keeping our eye on it for sure because it is, it is an issue.
My intuition would be extremely low here, but that doesn't surprise me, Newbury Port would be the highest.
Yep. Yeah, they're trying to figure out a way to.
I'm going slightly off-topic, but with this, did you do any correlations? So North Andover, 73% homeowner, 27% rental. Did you do any correlations between, like, how long people stay in town between homeownership and rental?
Yep. I believe that, that's a good question if it's between homeownership or rental, but there is a chart in here that talks about the number of people migrating from within, staying within county, but I don't know if it actually talked about whether they are renting or owning.
I mean, it would be sort of intuitively obvious that if you owned a home, you're likely to stay longer than if you rented. I mean, that's part of the reason why you rent, but I was wondering if you had any statistics to that effect, that whether there are any, you know, what's the degree of transience?
What's the, I'm sorry?
Degree of transience in the rental population.
Yeah. I believe that is in here, and I'm sorry, I don't know which page it is, but there, I want to say it's broken down by ownership versus rental as well.
The theory used to be that people would rent and try to save up to buy, but you can't really do that anymore because the rents are so high that you're really not saving anything.
But I mean, also, some people are just, hey, I'm not sure how long I'm going to be here, I may be going from here to someplace else. be here, I may be going from here to someplace else.
Yeah, unfortunately, it wasn't broken down that way, so it's folks who, and I'll have to look deeper into the figures, because it looks like it wasn't a total population for the community, so there must be something that was taken in, maybe, for instance, some of these were, oh yeah, it was anybody below one years of age, they didn't talk about them moving. But it's same home, same county, same state, different state. I can see if I can find that, though. I would think that they probably have some of that as well. If people report that, I think that's the hard part about the American Community Survey information, which is the in-between years, between the census, is that, not that the question's not asked, but it's a sample size, so, and it's done over a five-year period, so it's, you know, there's a margin of error there that we do mention in here, because we want to make sure we're covering as much as we can with that, because some of these could be a higher margin of error, and then you have to take that into account before you use the data, so. But it is a really great question.
I mean, it's, the thing is, there's a lot of public policy implications from it, I mean, and sometimes they may be contrary to the goal of making housing affordable to everybody. Because I think you could make the argument, now I'm not, now I'm putting it out there for sort of broad discussion purposes, not necessarily that I agree with it, but if you, if you own a house, you have a stronger stake in the community, you participate more in a variety of activities than if you rent. Now, there's probably a core rental, that's why I was trying to find a correlation there with rental and the stability, because the more permanence you have, the more stronger sense of community you're going to have, like it or not, and I think that's true in most cases. It's not necessarily, you know, maybe, maybe that's not the goal you want for the community, but I think it's actually, I would think that model would hold up in most places, that's all. And so I was just wondering what information you had to that effect.
Yeah, we just did the same home versus county. All right, so switching gears to the strategies that meet the needs that we just discussed, and again, those were basic, so I'd encourage you to look through all the data if you have a chance, and there are great summaries before each of those two sections that I mentioned that call out some findings, basically, so you don't have to read the entire thing, but the data's pretty fun. So we broke the strategies down into three categories that were kind of showing themselves to us as we looked through all the different ideas that we were getting from the community workshops, as well as just ideas from around the state. There's lots of really interesting things that have been, that are being done by your peers in other towns and cities. The first is planning and policies, so these are anything that builds capacity, so for instance, a housing committee or a trust, if it doesn't exist, which it does here, obviously, so, but in some communities it doesn't. Any zoning changes or updates to your policies. And then the second one is around production, with a focus on getting the community to the 10% affordability, but there are some others that talk about, you know, production of units that meet 80% of the median income, all the way up to 120%, which those don't qualify for the subsidized housing inventory, but are still important, because they, there are people who are in that income range who unfortunately are being priced out of communities. And then preservation, so how can we both keep the existing units that are on your subsidized housing inventory, as well as any future units, and keep those affordable? So the first bucket around planning and policies, and I didn't list all of these, so it would be good to go through each of these, but I wanted to call out the ones that were consistent with the themes that we just talked about. So around, you know, ways to develop affordable housing, we're seeing a lot of public-private partnerships pop up for developers, so this is anybody maybe with a community development corporation, partnering with them, which you guys do, Bread and Roses, as well as Habitat for Humanity, partnering with them to look at privately-owned sites and affordable housing on those sites. Adopting an inclusionary housing bylaw, looking at the Age Friendly Communities Program, which is actually a national program, but there's a state chapter through the AARP that goes through an eight-point approach to how to keep, how to basically work with seniors in our communities. So everything from housing to their finances, to access to resources and transportation. It's a great program, there's one community in our region right now that's designated as an age-friendly community, and that's Lawrence. So, and MVPC is actually taking it upon ourselves to commit to this project, as well as an age-friendly region. We have one other region in the state that's working on this right now, but this is a great way for us to work with communities that don't have the capacity potentially to go through this eight-point program. Conducting community education around affordable housing, you know, putting a face to who is in these homes, and making sure people understand the reason why affordable housing creates, you know, affordable, excuse me, livable communities that are vibrant. And then looking at models for shared living situations, which is actually an up-and-coming thing that AARP has been promoting, that seniors, instead of living in assisted living facilities, they kind of transition from maybe a single-family home where they might be a widow or widower into a shared situation with other elders, so that they can be part of a community but still have some independence.
Time's running out, again, I think everybody sort of knows, but what's included in the 10% and, you know, the affordable housing and what isn't?
What's included?
In the subsidized housing, in other words, what counts to the 10% versus what doesn't count to the 10%?
Any units, you mean the criteria that it needs to meet?
Yeah.
So units that are available to, well, that are for folks that are making below 80% of the area median income, they have to receive state subsidies of some type, so Mass Housing, Mass Housing, there's a couple of them, DHCD.
Okay.
And I'm forgetting the third one, apologies.
So does that include the senior housing?
It depends, it's affordability, so it doesn't mean that the.
Well, if it is, I mean, if it's basically an income threshold to get in and it's pegged to, you know, social security or whatever, does that count?
If it met those other criteria, yes, yeah. So I don't know if yours is specific as.
And if it's market-rate housing that is priced lower than some of the substantive condos, it doesn't count, right? In other words, if there's no subsidy involved, but the price is lower, it doesn't count in affordable housing.
It has to meet the criteria by Department of Housing and Community Development and Chapter 40B.
Okay, but I mean, the point that I'm making is, we have, you know, you said we have 8%, but there's probably, I'm going to guess, at least 200, 250 units in this town. There are market units, no subsidies, that cost less than the subsidized units, yet they don't count. That seems to be gratuitously unfair, because there's no state money involved, it's the market doing this, and yet the town's being penalized for that, I mean.
They didn't go through the same approach, and so they're not going to be affordable in perpetuity and/or even for a series of years, so there's no guarantee that from month to month that they're not going to, that they are going to be below that threshold that you're.
Well, I mean, yeah, if something crazy happens in the real estate market, maybe that's the case, but the point is, at any point in time, I mean, we're trying to make housing that's affordable, and here we have housing that's affordable that, you know, I mean, part of the problem with affordable housing is it's expensive. I mean, you know, being on the CPC, I know this, it's the amount of money you put in per housing unit is really a lot. Now, here we have cases where we found affordable housing for people, no government money involved, it doesn't even count. It just seems to me to be working a counter purpose.
And many communities actually have that, so.
Yeah.
There are ways to work with that developer or the owner, to put them on there through the local initiative program, that was called the LIP program. There are actually quite a few that we could go through the process with them. I don't know how, quite how onerous it is, but it seems like that's a great way to make sure that those will be added and counted, as you're saying, so you're not, the town's not penalized.
Right, I mean, part of it, a lot of this, is that affordable housing is just a good goal to have, so that, you know, people can, that we want to have that, but the 10% is key, and that, you know, it allows the town more control over what, how projects are developed and things like that, so, I mean, those, 10%, I see more as that number that's set by the state and that has control, and I think we want to have affordable housing just as a general rule. Can you talk a little bit about the inclusionary housing bylaw? Have you seen ones that you're, that you like, that, I know there's a model, but how you kind of would see that for North Andover, unless you, unless we come to that later on?
We didn't get into how we, how that would work, I don't know if Eric or Gene want to comment on that. I don't know how that, sorry, we didn't get into the details for it, so I think that it was, the exploration of that would be the details, you know, the devil is in the details type of thing, because there are communities that have a variety of different standards that they're using for that, where it's the size of the development itself, you know, density, I mean, there's a lot of different pieces to it, which is why we put a model in there.
So the purpose of the bullet, then, just inclusionary housing, meaning when you're building new units or developments that some is somehow set aside for affordable units?
Yes.
Okay.
And usually, again, it's dependent on the size of the development, so it'd have to be over a certain amount in order, and then you'd have a percentage, like a 20% of the units would be affordable. So, is that, did that answer your question?
Yeah, I mean, I'm familiar with the inclusionary housing, I didn't know how, I just thought it'd be good, so that we're all on the same page about what that actually means.
Sure. Any other questions about this slide? All right, so for production, again, I mentioned that one of the goals, not necessarily around aiming at the 10%, but for those folks that are both low and moderate, so moderate is above the 80% area median income, so not, doesn't necessarily need to be on the subsidized housing inventory, but recognizing that, and the numbers are in here, too, of people that are housing burdened, so it doesn't matter what they're making, but they are still burdened by the costs of their homes and their housing costs, because they're spending more than 30% of their income on housing. So there's a need definitely throughout North Andover and the region, for that matter, to look at all, housing that's going to accommodate all incomes. Ensuring that our new and remodeled units follow ADA standards at a very minimum, or universal design standards, which is human-based standards, basically, it's kind of takes ADA to another step, it's on steroids, if you will. So really thinking about how we get around visitability standards, which is not the necessarily having someone in your home who's, who needs some sort of disability accommodations, but people who may be visiting your home, like your mothers or grandmothers, whoever those folks are, but thinking about how we accommodate for those folks as well. Looking at starter homes, or any types of homes for that matter, but making sure they're right-sized, and developing criteria that North Andover can use that's going to fit you, or you, do you have a lot of people who are working at home now, or people who want to have, maybe, have accessory dwelling units, how do they accommodate for that? So thinking about that term right-size and what that means for your community, so that that can be then communicated to developers as far as what your needs are. Looking at sustainable design standards, and there are a couple of examples in here, Green Globes, Energy Star, they kind of run the full gamut from very, very green to energy-efficient. So it's really based on what you'd like to implement to make those homes green, and in addition to, obviously, the Mother Nature piece of it, it does help make homes affordable. Again, that speaks to that cost-burden situation where people are paying more than 30% or even 50% in some cases, and again, those numbers are in here on the numbers, the quantity of people that are paying exorbitant amounts on their housing costs, both homeowners and renters. And then developing design standards for residential development, I believe this was a carryover from the last plan, if I remember right, from your last housing production plan. And then these, this was, these were the areas, and this is going to be hard to see, but it is in your plan, hopefully an eight and a half by, or 11 by 17, but maybe eight and a half by 11, but this was the result of a workshop that, actually the second workshop, of where housing could or should be placed in North Andover, I should say should, could, because there's really no should at this point, but this is a requirement of the plan, of the requirements for Department of Housing and Community Development to show where future housing should go. And there were a lot of criteria used here, so access to transit, existing, access to existing housing, location near commercial districts or near retail, near services, you know, for, especially for elderly housing, that need for, you know, proximity to services and, you know, not putting them out in the middle of nowhere. So that's kind of the criteria that a lot of this, a lot of, a lot was used, access to, obviously, to your infrastructure, sewer and water, if there didn't happen to be any in the hinterlands, so.
Yeah, we do have this.
Okay, yeah, it's a little smaller.
Is there a separate, like, larger document, PDF, that I?
So what you see there is in the housing plan, you also have on page 49, those are the properties called out on that map.
Oh, okay.
It's a little bit better. Yep, the table on page 49.
49.
So some of these are in progress or have been proposed, others are just concepts.
Conceptual.
And this gives DHCD an idea, and developers for that matter, because this really should be, obviously, it's going to be a public document when it's adopted, is something that you can use to say, hey, these, this is the kind of stuff we're looking at right now, and this is what we want to do in the future. So they're good, good ways to show what's kind of on your radar. Let's screw up my slide again. So moving on to preservation, there were three strategies I wanted to call out for that. One was to develop a system to monitor the subsidized housing inventory. There are some units, as you'll see in the back in the appendix, that are up for expiration because they were not protected in perpetuity, and so those are good things to keep an eye on, so that they don't, what we call, fall off of the subsidized housing inventory, because then that will affect your total number still. And to keep in mind that this is important to put in place, because the 2020 census is just right around the corner, you've probably seen, unfortunately, some news about that in the recent past, so, but they are gearing up for that, and we, and there's footnotes next to some pieces in the housing production plan stating that in 2021, it'll be a good thing to reassess, you know, what is the new year-round total, because that will affect your percentage of how many units you have. And a lot can happen over the next three years. I mean, according to Eric, it sounds like you guys are close to 10% with some of the existing projects that are being proposed here, so, but still, something to keep in mind in monitoring those, so you don't lose any units is really, is an effective way to keep your inventory intact. Looking at single-family homes and converting those to multi-unit for supportive services, for a small-scale, for that congregate living that we talked about, the shared living that seems to be more popular amongst some of the seniors lately. And then considering retrofitting any municipally-owned buildings, if there are any old schools or anything that's kind of sitting there, not on the tax rolls right now, there's been some successful redevelopments over the, not just in the region, but in the state, where affordable housing has been developed in buildings, and there's funding associated with those programs, too, so I'd encourage you to take a look at that. So the next steps would be to, and we are looking at the plan right now, so reviewing that and discussing any issues or comments that you might have. It is required that both the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen adopt this plan before it goes to the Department of Housing and Community Development for their final approval, for it to become certifiable, and then it will be incorporated into our final Merrimack Valley Regional Housing Plan, as I mentioned earlier.
Like, what's the ultimate, so we get this, to get your plan together, the Merrimack Valley Regional Housing Plan is done.
Mm-hmm.
Then what?
So you'll have a certifiable housing production plan. So the ultimate goal, which is on page 51, is for you to meet the yearly units, whether it be adding .5% of your units or 1% of your units as affordable units. So there's a timeline here that shows for .5%, you would need to develop at least 55 units in a year, or 109, and if you meet 55, then your plan will be certified for a year. If you develop 109 subsidized housing inventory units, then you would be certified for two years, which means you're in safe harbor status, so if a project came before you, then you could say no to that.
Okay, that's what I was trying to figure out, that was, okay.
Yep, and then ultimately, obviously, on the next, I'm sorry, we didn't put that plan, we'll have to put a plan together for the 10%, but getting you to 10%, I think that it's a smaller number that you would need to reach in order to get to 10%, obviously, you're only shy 159 units. And again, that's not withstanding anything that might be in the pipeline right now, so this is just as of the DHCD numbers in December, which, as you know, they can fluctuate, so.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, sure.
I just had a couple of comments on page 45.
45?
And 46.
46.
So I know that you drew much of this section from. So I know that you drew much of this section from the open space and recreation plan and the master plan, but on 46, and I think it's a small point, but the top of 46, you're listing the institutional property owners in the watershed, the top paragraph on 46?
Oh, oh, okay, yeah, the Andover Country Club and, or North Andover Country Club and Brook School.
So you're listing three, there's six. I don't know if you want to
Oh, okay.
...update that or not.
Sure, yeah, or take them out, whichever one you think is more appropriate.
No, I'd say add them all in.
What are, what are the other three?
So you've got three listed, the other three are trustees of reservations,
Uh-huh.
The Edgewood Housing, and then the last one is the town of North Andover itself at Half Mile Hill and the Stevens Estate.
The Stevens Estate?
Yeah, but it's town of North Andover.
Okay, yeah, sure.
So then on 45, the only comment I had there under the Lake Chickwick watershed protection.
On page 45?
Yeah, you see the two bullets?
Yes.
Areas of special importance?
Uh-huh.
Not quite sure how you teased out those two.
That was in the open space plan.
Yeah.
Is it not consistent with, with the town feels or in this watershed?
It's probably a matter of some opinion, but I would have added a third, but.
We would, we obviously want this to be consistent with what the feelings are of the town, so.
Yeah, I'm not sure that that's representative of the whole town. I was just curious how you ended up with two.
Yeah, those were the two that were highlighted in the open space plan.
Thanks.
No, I just don't know if you want to talk to the master plan consultant team and get their perspective on what we're hearing in terms of feedback from the public related to housing, and again, isolate just the housing chapter for this review.
Sure.
Yeah, I'd like to.
Come on up.
I'm only.
Hi.
Hi.
Good to see you all again. Where do you want to start?
What does everybody agree on? All right, so what does everybody not agree on?
How to address the housing issues in the town. I think, I think the public forum, the folks at the public forum were a little more receptive to some of the housing strategies and land use strategies that we had put out there. I think the survey results were a little bit more mixed, but I would say even if you looked at the number of people, and we broke it down by percentage of over the five categories from strongly agree to strongly disagree and everything in between, if you look at most of the strategies, I think most of them are probably 70, 80, 90% between the strongly agree and somewhat agree, which I think is good. But if you looked at all seven master plan chapters and looked at where there might have been the most disagreement or least disagreement, whatever you want to say, I think housing was probably number one, you know, and then I think what we heard was schools, traffic, size and scale of more recent housing developments, you know, which, again, I work in many, many, many communities across Massachusetts, more than I can name, and when you get outside of the immediate Boston area, to some degree even in the Boston area, you hear these, sort of those three things more often than not. Sometimes there's a lot of truth to some of them, depending on the community, sometimes it's more perception-based. But coming out of the first public meeting, what I think I heard and the committee heard loud and clear was that housing choice, both the type of housing and the price point of housing is limited in North Andover, and the price continues to go up whether you're renter or owner, what do we do about that? My kids can't stay here after they graduate from high school or college or whatever they're doing. If you're on the older end of the spectrum, there's nowhere for you to downsize, if you don't want to stay in your home or you're unable to stay in your home, there's not affordable options for, options for those who aren't making a really, really good living. So you take that coming out of the first meeting, and then you take some of the feedback coming out of the strategies that we developed to try to address what we thought we heard people say in the first meeting, and the feedback, I think, on some of the strategies was, oh no, we can't have any, we can't have any more housing because it's going to cause too many problems. But you can't have, you can't achieve that goal and that vision of having choice diversity, type diversity in the town without allowing new development to some degree, or at least a retrofit of the development that's here today. So what we tried to do with the strategies was come up with a way that we could make it palatable for people, hopefully, try to concentrate maybe some housing density or just mixed-use density, development density in places where there's already the infrastructure in place, where some of that development pattern already exists, and, you know, try to keep it out of the neighborhoods where we can. But then if we're thinking about housing choice and we want to think about housing on smaller lots, or just instead of a 3,000-square-foot house on a two-acre lot, what's wrong with, you know, doing a cluster development? There's already some of these examples in town, you know, doing a cluster development and making a couple of quarter-acre lots with 1,200-square-foot homes, and maybe they're starter homes, or maybe they're all kind of one-story accessible housing for seniors, whatever it might be. And, you know, there seemed to be some pushback on doing sort of quote-unquote higher-density housing in out country, where I think people are used to seeing the kind of one- and two-acre subdivisions mixed in with a lot of preserved land that the town has gone out and purchased over time. So I don't know, I think as a team and as a committee, we're sort of like, okay, which one do you want? Do you want to try to achieve the goals, and here's a set of strategies that we think could help? Do I think we should tweak some of the strategies? I think yes, and we're working on that behind the scenes, but in general, I think we've tried to lay out a path to get to where I thought, you know, people want to go. And again, it's not everybody, I actually think the majority of people probably want to go in that direction, but, you know, just, in all fairness, there were comments, you know, in the, sort of going in the opposite way.
The Foster Street cell tower with the Osgood Landing Cannabis Project, heard a lot of, what about property values? What about, I think some, it's something that people are top of mind, I think they, people in this town like, generally like the idea, they agree with the premise, well, yeah, we should have housing that's affordable for a range of incomes, but, but then they're very protective of their, their value of their house as well, and.
That's a dichotomy, and you, to some extent, you have the supply-demand that affects that.
Yeah.
It's, it's an interesting problem.
Yeah, I mean, I'd love to hear your opinions or even opinions from the public about what, what do you think is driving, going to drive down property values? Is it coming up with a cluster subdivision of quarter-acre lots that are sort of buffered from all views by, you know, an open space, or what, I mean, what is it?
I guess, I would look at it from a slightly different perspective than, than you have here, but I think you did hit on one key point that I think is extremely relevant is that you were talking about putting the high-density type projects in areas where it could accommodate it, where it worked, and it actually might even enhance.
Sure.
And I think that really is critical, and I'll, I'll sort of put that aside because I think we have to come back to that, because I'm absolutely convinced that that's the core, the high-density and the lower-cost, and there's no other way you can get there from here. But the, the problem with building in our country, first of all, is we already have a cluster bylaw, and I would say, since we've put the cluster bylaw in, probably the majority of subdivisions that have come forward have availed themselves of it. It's maybe not as small lot as, as you would like, but it's, second, the amount of open land in our country, with the exception of two really large farms, Farnham Farm and Barker Farm, there just ain't that much of it. I'm sorry, there's, you know, we're at the point where you get past early 90s, there has not been much single-family housing built in this town, there just hasn't been. I mean, have, how many since people, how many subdivisions have we done? Not very many. We haven't done any subdivisions of 20 houses, I think, in the last 10 years.
Forty, yeah.
And that's the point is, so I think we're almost inevitably, the vast majority of what we have is going to be multifamily just by default.
Yeah.
So my thinking is focus on that, how we get that, focus on the half dozen or more parcels where there's really a great opportunity for high-density that will add to the character of what's there and not detract from it.
Yeah.
And that's where I think we should focus, at least, that's just my opinion.
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
I agree with John on that, I mean, if you're going to make a dent into affordable housing, it's nice to find little places here and there where you can, you know, for one particular family and, you know, red and roses or habitat, that's great, but it's not really going to make a big dent. If you're going to actually make a dent, it's got to be through multifamily housing. And it's interesting to me to see the chart on page 30 of the, of the housing production plan, that only 53 parcels in town are apartment buildings, and that's 0.52%, you got 2,100 parcels that are condos and 20, which is 21%. So I, I found that very interesting, that even though all these, you know, units that you might have only for rent and apartments, there is a very, very small amount, which I do think that there's a significant need for that. You know, and the, the property values thing is interesting to me too, because it is hard to quantify, and also you hear a lot about, you know, I've been here 20, 30 years, that you're not selling your house, your property value, I mean, it affects your taxes, but if you're not selling your house, it's not as essential, at least until you want to sell your house, then it's a bore. I mean, it's good that we keep, you know, values high certainly, and we don't want to do things that are going to detract, but it's, I think there are other focuses, there are other ways to focus on these issues that are sort of more important. I think the idea of, you know, finding creative ways in small clusters, whether it be through, you know, inclusionary housing or accessory units, I think that that's a great idea to find a good accessory unit, and then, like with, I agree with John, of finding the right places to really find multifamily, or apartments and things like that.
And I, and I don't think it, you know, I don't know if maybe people are nervous about the sort of size of some of the developments that have come in recently, and, you know, I can understand that, but I think there's also opportunities in downtown, for example, where maybe, you know, the, the new two-story building that went down the street, I know there's no residential above, I think it's offices right on the, on the upper story?
The back.
Yeah, in the back. But, you know, I don't think that's out of scale, in my opinion, at least to what sort of surrounding, and so are there opportunities to do some more of those sort of strategic infills, those two or three stories, where you still keep commercial component on the first floor, maybe even do office on the second with residential in the third, I mean, whatever the mix is, but I think there's opportunities to add in, you know, some housing there and also enhance the downtown through a redevelopment scheme, but also bringing in kind of that built-in customer base for some of the businesses in downtown. So, you know, maybe it makes more sense to have a strategy like that in the downtown, and then on some of the commercial corridors, maybe that's where there's a little, there's some more ability to achieve a little bit higher density. You know, maybe the, you know, the Osgood site is interesting, it's such a, such a massive site, and you're, you know, the 40R is already in place, which allows a mix of uses, including housing, and sort of incentivizes housing through the program, but maybe there's a way to accommodate on a portion of the site, your commercial uses or whatever's going to go there to generate the commercial tax base, and then on another portion of the site, be able to accommodate a mix of housing options, so maybe there's some town homes that transition into condos, that transition into higher-scale rental as you sort of work your way from front to back, or, you know, I don't know what the site, the site design would be, but I think that's an interesting opportunity where the site's big enough that you could do a mixture of, of a couple of different things, rather than trying to work on, you know, a shallow lot or a narrow lot, or one that's not big enough, and then you end up with, you know, kind of a five-story stick-over podium building, you know, on a 40B, because that's kind of, well, that's what can go there, and we can work our way around zoning, and that's what they're going to do. So I mean, I think it would be interesting for the town to look at different opportunities where you have leverage, and you're able to then, I think as Angie said, do this sort of public-private partnership, or at least work, or maybe put some of the town's CPA money, or have the Affordable Housing Trust come in and sort of partner with the developer to really get a good project that meets the goals of the town, so that the town doesn't kind of get something shoved at them and says here, this is what we're going to do.
I'm listening to all of this, and I think the affordable housing is a really important goal, but I just keep coming back to the fact that with all of these developments already going up in town, all of the ones that were approved before I'm on the board that are coming in, all of this new housing, and my kids are in overcrowded classrooms, like, my, my daughter's first grade class has almost 30 kids, my son's third grade class, almost 30 kids, we're building a new school because we can't accommodate all the kids we have in town and the classrooms that we have in town, and we don't have teachers to fill all the empty classes. I don't know why we're putting in all of these new housing units and saying we're worried about property value, when our schools have got to be one of the biggest factors driving our property value. And if we just keep putting in more and more big developments and big buildings with lots of more kids, the problems with the schools is going to get worse, and that's why you're seeing the big disconnect. Yes, everybody thinks affordable housing is great, but everybody wants their kids to get a good education, and that's why people in a certain age group are moving in and spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on houses so that they can get their kids a good education. And I think if we don't marry the two together, it's going to be a huge issue, and I think that's a really important piece that is missing from this entire discussion. And I don't know how we get there and how we do that, because clearly schools is outside of our purview and not something we can necessarily directly impact, but I don't think that we should be necessarily rushing into develop, encouraging development of lots of additional housing units that are going to bring, you know, increased population to our schools that are already overcrowded. I just think we need to be thoughtful about it, and I know that there are a lot of people in town who think the same thing and have the same concerns.
Yeah.
Am I reading this right, though, that the student population has decreased?
I mean, I'm looking on page 14 of the, you know, here.
So, right, so the, so the issue is creating the right type of unit, so.
I mean, it says five to 19 years, I mean, years of age, right, is that the population, the population age? So we're, we're actually seeing a decline in school age population.
And a projected decline as well.
A fairly significant one.
Through 2035.
Because I know, I know exactly what you're talking about, because that's always what people are passionate about, is the schools, and the schools are overcrowded, so it is a little disconnected, like, how do we have declining population and still have overcrowded schools? Hmm, that's a hmm, but nevertheless, I thought this, that really jumped out to me. I always thought the student population was increasing, and it, and it's clearly not.
I would say, I might not have these numbers exactly, but in looking 10 years ago to now, although there's blips in certain years, and I'm sure certain classrooms in certain schools is blips, but year over year, over a 10-year period, the average student size has remained flat within one or two. Again, then we have projections going forward, and the kindergarten, the new kindergarten is supposed to alleviate some of that, and over three-year period, hire more teachers for those empty classroom spaces, but it's all part of the mix, right? It's all part of the conversation, and we heard loud and clear concerns with schools and class sizes.
Absolutely.
So it's important, you know, I mean, I've seen, I haven't seen it here, and maybe it's just I haven't seen, you know, and I know in some of the, I think maybe RTG talked about it in their Mills project about, you know, number of projected students, you know, I think that's always important when we are, especially doing large scale. When you see a lot of one-bedroom apartments, you don't get a lot of students, two-bedroom apartments, you start to get more, three, you definitely, single-family homes, you, you know, those are, you know, families and students, so it's, you know, especially if we can, you can focus, I think a lot of the presentation before about seniors and larger units and shares for seniors, I mean, I think that's a great way to, to meld those two things, of having more people in one space, but also not, you know, having, unless they're going back to school, but, you know.
What, what we've been seeing in a number of the communities that are desirable, higher income and have, have a good school district, is that in many cases, it's actually the turnover in single-family homes from older empty nesters to young, either young professionals who haven't had kids yet but are about to, or people who are moving in with two or three kids, that's a lot of times where you're actually seeing much more in the kind of cycle of Massachusetts right now, that's where you're seeing the student generation.
I asked before, it'd be nice to understand the, the turnover of different types, particularly for the reason you said, because that impacts a lot of different things, yeah.
Because if you can, if people want to stay in town, but they don't, they want to downsize, but they want to stay, if you can provide a, the right situations for that, you can kind of accomplish all of those things, people who are downsizing can stay, then that can become a single-family home, and it can all kind of work in a cycle.
That's why I didn't understand, there was a, a point, I think it was more in the, the regional overview about encouraging seniors to, to stay in their homes. I know, I know many seniors would like to, but, but then I know there's, there's some that, that don't, and, but, but usually they're, they're, it's, it's to spouse. that don't. And, but, but usually, they're, they're, it's, it's to spouse, spouses in a very large house. And it doesn't seem like the best use of resources to, to, to promote that in any, in any real way, like through, I don't know, tax abatements or anything. It, it just seems to be, the, the, the concept of maybe encouraging downsizing to, to bring in families would be more appropriate. I don't know. It, it just, that's just struck me as an interesting point in that slide.
It's, it's an interesting thing, I mean, just that, to some degree, finding housing for seniors is a moving target, that, you know, I've heard lots of stories that forty, fifty years ago, when Royal Crest opened up, that was considered the place to go. If you were, wanted to move out of your house and move into another place, you would go to Royal Crest. Doctors and lawyers and all sorts of people did. Now what happens is, you know, they go to Smollick's, or if they have a ton of money, they go to Edgewood. And so it's, the world's different, so many things are changing simultaneously, it's always hard to, to get your arms around it, you know?
On that topic, I had, I had a question in my mind. I, I noticed a, a, a point, you noted a point about rightsizing housing, but, and you also had a point in, within the report that I saw earlier, about how, you know, since nineteen sixty, houses have got bigger and bigger and bigger over time. So I was curious if either of you had any kind of point of view as to what rightsizing is these days? Like, how much, I'd say square footage does, does a person need, and how could that inform, like, 'cause I know from, my, my father, his family was sixth. In Westbrook, Maine, in the nineteen fifties and sixties, they lived in a nine-hundred-square-foot house. I, me, my wife and son live in a twenty-five-hundred-square-foot house. I was wondering if, is there some type of bend back towards more, I guess you could say, rightsizing?
You need to cut off a quarter and give it away.
Yeah. Yeah. It, it, it's a point well made in the report, that houses have got bigger. And, and maybe there's the, maybe there's a, in terms of really generating affordable housing, it, it's rightsizing that, so people have enough space, but we're not, you know, we're not encouraging large developments. But, but it's a question, if you have a, a sense of that, what, what a right size is.
Honestly, I, I think it's relative to how much money you have, and what you, and what you can afford. I mean, if you can afford a twenty-five square, twenty-five-hundred-square-foot house, or a five-thousand-square-foot house, you might just go ahead and buy that, because you can.
Sometimes I wish I had the nine-hundred-square-foot house.
I agree. You know, and if you can afford a nine-hundred-square-foot house, or a five-hundred-square-foot house, that's probably what you're gonna, you know, what you're gonna be, is your entry point into the market, especially in, you know, communities that have a much higher starting value or a larger barrier to entry. I mean, you see, I'm probably getting strung up for saying this, but I'll say it anyway. There, you know, there's these sort of tiny homes, this two-hundred-fifty, three-hundred square foot, you know, a lot of people are talking about that as a possible solution. I don't know. I feel like we're forcing people to live in a box because we have an affordable housing, we have a housing affordability problem. So now we're saying, oh, because either wages are stagnant and everything else is going up, and you don't make enough money, we're gonna stick you in a two-hundred, two-hundred-square-foot box, and that's where you're gonna have to live.
I don't think there's any less costly to build than a, say, an eight-hundred-square-foot box.
So, when I think about rights, rightsizing houses, I mean, I think about, yeah, if it's, if it's two people, and, you know, they're in their formative years, and they don't have a family yet, then maybe eight-hundred-square-foot starter home is perfectly fine. And then as they move up, maybe they do need three bedrooms if they're gonna have, you know, begin to have a family, or they have a, a parent or a relative that needs to come, who needs assistance to live with them, and then maybe they can work their way up if they can afford, you know, a much larger home, but, you know, I don't know.
So it's not, like I say, a market trend that you're specifically pointing to? It's more of a general concept?
Yeah, and, and more so the point here was, is, is there something specific to North Yanoke, for instance? So you have, all uses, the community outside of our, our, our region, Gloucester has like a large artist community in somewhere, in one of their areas. So, you know, they may play into what the, what the, that right size is for them, given that there's kind of a work-live scenario for them. They need space to do their, it's not a hobby, it's their work. But then they also need their, their space where they're living, too, so there might be a different scenario for that. So, but I can look into it, though, 'cause it is, I wanna say there was an average that I've seen out there, but it's also different, different parts of the, the United States, too. And I think that's the hard part. Where we, you know, where Florida and some of the warmer states might enjoy warmer weather, you know, they can use patios and other things as living space, literally, whereas we are cooped up still in our space and can't use three-season porches even. So I think it's really gonna vary based on the area, but there might be a New England number. But I, I think it's a very curious question. I'm definitely gonna look into it, 'cause that would help. Give you at least a, a starting point for what rightsize.
I, I think the idea around accessory dwelling units might be almost a better solution to some of the others, because you can use it in a lot of different ways. So you could, you could have the, the older person move out of the larger home, have somebody move into that, they can move into the smaller home. Now they don't have all the burden of taking care of a larger home, but they still live in town, they still live on the property, and they're probably living in a more affordable situation, especially if they're moving from employment to fixed-income portions of their life. They could continue to remain in the larger home, they could have somebody younger and maybe more able to move into the smaller home, that could then help them with taking care of the yard. They could rent that out to somebody, and then use that to subsidize their income to stay in the larger unit. You know, I know that there's a lot of pushback around the design and the compatibility with accessory dwelling units with the neighborhood, the fear of renting them out of short-term, short-term rentals on an Airbnb kind of thing. So I know there's a lot of, while there's a lot of issues, I think there are a lot of upside to accessory dwelling units when they're done the right way. And I just think that, that offers a more, I think, a more interesting and sometimes more useful option. And if you can blend it into the neighborhood, it's, I think it's an easy way to do.
Do you have any examples where it has been done the right way?
Have you been to Belvedere and Lowell? There's quite a few accessory dwelling units and/or condos that are in that, those mansions that you would never know. Nikki Songas' old house, her old home, which is in Belvedere, has an old barn that was retrofitted into an accessory dwelling unit, which is gorgeous, and you would never know that, you know, those people are not related and living on the same property. So I feel like Lowell's actually really done it well. A lot of hidden little gems here and there. And I, I used to live right on the other side of that, that neighborhood, so I was walking through it all the time, and it's, it really isn't that obvious when you're, when you're kind of just strolling around.
Any other best practices that you know of around the state?
Specific to accessory units?
Yeah.
I mean, I've seen a lot of sad coordinacies and bylaws that are tied to...
Yeah, we've been trying to find kind of the, the, the whole state, since zoning reform is going, is in front of both our House and our Senate, we, we've been looking at best practices through a variety of different lenses, and I don't think ADU's is one that I don't even believe that the Massachusetts Smart Growth Alliance has found like the right ticket yet, 'cause there's something that's always kind of a little tweaky with it. So, but I can check in with them again. I know they were doing a lot of research on it to try to find something, but something was always kind of off, whether it was that it was limited to family, or the size, or detached versus, versus unattached, detached versus attached. So there was always something that was a little weird. But I'll see if they found something.
I think about three months ago, four months ago, New Hampshire actually just came out with a best practices manual for accessory dwelling units. So I would encourage you to take, take a look at that, too.
Thank you, guys.
So is the board going to...
Timing, any thoughts on that?
That'd be great. Yeah, so there's not necessarily a limit on it, but it would, we, as I mentioned, the board needs to approve the planning, the, the housing production, or sorry, adopt the housing production plan, and recommend adoption to the Board of Selectmen in order for this to go forward. So we're hoping that at, you know, not necessarily this meeting, but at your next meeting, that that would be considered. Again, so that you can move forward to having a certifiable housing production plan.
Okay, and so that's adopting this draft? Okay, so why don't we, why don't we put that on the agenda for the next meeting?
For the next meeting, yeah.
Just put a housing production plan. And, yeah, 'cause I mean, then at least, if there is any public, anyone has any comments on that, they can, additional comments they wanna make to us, we can have that.
Next meeting is May first.
May first, okay.
Sort of segue to the master plan from there. We anticipate probably the May twenty-first meeting, having a draft of the master plan document. So tonight, you received only the housing survey responses. I think they included the entire public forum, two responses. So I intend to put those up, along with the other chapter survey responses, on the website tomorrow, under the master plan. I just wanted to know your thoughts in terms of public hearings associated with the master plan. I would anticipate you'd want to publish that as a public hearing, maybe two.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, are there any legal requirements?
To do a public hearing, I don't think it's legal.
Okay. I mean, we should, but I'm, I'm just wondering if, if there are.
It's certainly been a very public process. I mean, I will say, our attendance, all indications are, there's been really strong attendance the, the whole way through, but I would recommend at least one public hearing.
My thought would be, we should at least have it to discuss and review before, once, at least once, before we have a public hearing. That way we...
Right. So we're anticipating that on June fifth. Did I read this right? June fifth, where, again, the consultant team would come in and review the draft with you, similar to the format we use tonight. And then move to a public hearing after that, which would be June nineteenth, for the first one. And if you wanted to do a second one, it would be July seventeenth, 'cause you don't have a meeting scheduled on July third.
Right. I'd be in favor of more than one public hearing. I know that the sense of the meetings that we had was that we had a very good turnout and a very robust participation in the survey. But the actual number of people compared to the size of the town is still quite small, although they were good turnouts. I, I was there.
Absolutely.
And so, to me, that argues to, I, I think we ought to have more than one public hearing. And you know what, then, if people choose not to come, you have the opportunity.
What's the timing like for the, my, I, I agree, but I agree, I just worry about also having them over the summer, you know, just, you know, we should have multiple ones, but what's our timing after that? So let's say we did, you know, a June and July.
So if you did the June nineteenth, July seventeenth, we would anticipate August seventh to be in the meeting, where you possibly could recommend adoption of it. And again, there'll be a parallel review with the Board of Selectmen.
And then what happens from there? Does it, does it ultimately need to go before town meeting?
It does not have to go to town meeting. That's not a requirement.
Okay. Okay, so, yeah, why don't we tentatively...
We kind of sketch that schedule out, I just wanna get a sense whether we're kind of...
I'd say at least, at least two, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
But it sounds like, to, to some extent, the, the housing portion of the master plan is locked in with this.
Like I said, I, I believe they're in alignment now. The fine tune of the strategies and whatnot may, you know, differ a little bit, but I think the goals should be in alignment. We were very careful about that at the start of this process, to make sure these guys stay in communication, that you're not drifting in two different directions. So I'm comfortable, I mean, all indications are the housing plan would be approved prior to the master plan.
But we heard earlier, this is probably the most, the housing is the most contentious discussion of the, the mass, whole master plan process, so wouldn't it behoove us to have a couple of public meetings on this? I, I don't wanna throw a wrench into the, I, I don't know what the, the timeline has to be on this, but it...
It's not set in stone. We obviously want this to be a plan that you approve and feel comfortable with and are, you know, proud of proceeding with. That said, we're hoping to wrap all these up in the middle of May, for a couple of different reasons. The first is that, then it would be a full regional housing plan, and also, the data is, is two thousand eleven to two thousand fifteen. So we're conscious that, you know, there's a new data set out, and that, you know, the longer you go, the more outdated things are. It's supposed to be similar to the master plan, a snapshot to make some decisions on, and then from there, you, you know, you use that information. So we're hoping that it doesn't get out of date.
So in terms of having a full regional set, I suspect it's important to you as a regional planner. But I, I think it's a good insight that if this is the most contentious part, I'd kind of hate to zip along and maybe miss opportunities for...
And with either plan, if it's anything zoning-related, it would still go through the whole, you know, public hearing process and town meeting process, for any of those strategies to actually be implemented.
Nothing is set in stone. Even DHC D doesn't see it that way. They see this as a, as a, an ideal roadmap, but they're not holding your feet to the fire for any of this.
There's no follow-up on implementation on this type of...
Yeah, no, I'm not, I know, I know we're not like locked into changing certain zoning based on this.
Well, why don't we put this on for the next meeting, see where we're at? I mean, everyone have reviewed, there's more things to discuss, so we can discuss them. Take it one meeting at a time, but I think it's a good outline of a plan we have so far.
In terms of process, if we're reading through this, and we have comments, questions, what's the best way to document that in between our two meetings?
If you send them to me, then I'll definitely share them. And we would hope that, yeah, if anybody has any questions like that or wants more information, the earlier you can get them, the better prepared we'll be for the next meeting.
Exactly.
Okay.
Great. Thanks for having us.
All right, so we'll continue to, on to continued public hearings. I'd said we'd do solar first, but I'm actually gonna put it last, 'cause I don't think there's anyone here to discuss any of the other ones, so let's just go through those. Article twenty-three, amend the zoning bylaw, section seven point four, building heights, and article twenty-four, amend the zoning bylaw map, B two, regarding the senior center. Any members of the public wanna discuss that? Any members of the board wanna discuss that? Okay, so, Jean, in terms of these public hearings, do we need to continue them for another date? Or are we, seems like we're done on...
On the public hearings, other than the solar, so it's all one public hearing for all of these.
Oh, for all of these, okay.
Yes, it's one public hearing.
I see. Never mind. Okay, so article twenty-five, anyone wanna talk about the zoning bylaw recodification? Nope. Anyone wanna talk about the Marblehead Street or the wireless facilities? Okay. Solar. I can tell you guys that just past two weeks, I have not had an opportunity to delve into the solar. I don't know if anybody else has, or has thoughts that they wanna share now. I just haven't had the time myself to really figure out what I want, or what I'm looking at. Anybody else have had the chance to delve in, or thoughts on solar?
I mean, I, I haven't had the chance, I'm sort of in the same circumstances as you, but I, I'm still thinking that our framework is good. I, I like the way we constructed the differentiation and the different types and so forth. Probably the one thing that I think from the public input that we got was that the bonding approach was off, and that we should make it more flexible to get what we want. And, you know, and, and just in general, are we doing anything to discourage it? But beyond that, I mean, I think we're pretty solid. I mean, you know, there's probably a few things we could tweak here and there, but I still think it's pretty solid.
So I think the biggest question, I, I agree with you on the bonding, I think we could fix it. I think the biggest question I have is, can we get the numbers to where we're comfortable in terms of the small, medium, and large, and in terms of what we want to be by right, by special permit, and by site plan? If we can get that, if we think we can be comfortable with that for the next meeting, and to have that to present to town meeting, then great. If we don't have that, I'd rather not put something forward that we aren't comfortable with. So if we don't really have a consensus that, you know, one thousand to ten thousand to twenty-five, or whatever the numbers are, if we don't have a consensus, I'd rather pull it and use it for next year. If we can get that for the next, next meeting, then great, let's do it. 'Cause I agree, I think it's, otherwise, I think it's pretty, pretty solid.
Yeah, I, I apologize. I planned to spend some hours on it today, but I took a nap.
Yeah.
Yeah, I warmed, I warmed up and took a nap. But my general thought was that, I think based on the public comments, my, my instinct is that we take out the pole-mounted, because that seems like something that was almost... is that we take out the pole-mounted, because that seems like something that was almost, well, it was a great idea at the beginning, the more I thought about it, it seemed maybe too formalistic and easy to get around. And then, I think on the dimensions, I think we just need to put heights in that, and I just keep going back to the basketball hoop example, and thinking that's probably where we set it, because that's something consistent in sort of what we all know in our own neighborhoods. And then, so I think that just affects, that was my big input on it, and my big insight, and I think, looking back at the charts that are in there, I just need to be in a better, more awake, warm position to...
All right. So then why don't, that's kind of where I stand too, so if we can, everyone kind of look at it, and if you can put, if people want to put to paper and send it to Gene, kind of what you're thinking in terms of the chart and the dimensions, I actually, I think I agree on the pole-mounted, I, based on Dan's comments, and then, was it Eric, the other, the guy who was here last time? Is that his name? Yeah, I mean, I'll just stick some sides on it, and now it's not pole-mounted, or I'll just make it on a pole, and then I'll do it to get around. I think it makes sense to just make it ground-mounted versus, even though it was my idea originally, I'll go back to that we can get rid of the pole-mounted delineation. And then, yeah, so if we can just look at the special permits versus site plan versus by right and the dimensions, then maybe we can tie that up.
Primary versus accessory.
Primary versus accessory.
Yeah, you've got some nodes for primary use, thinking if it's an industrial or business zone, that do we want a solar lot, or do we want a business lot? And, that's just all up for discussion, however you feel. And if you want to mark it up and just send it to me, I'll try to summarize everybody's comments into like a matrix format.
Okay, that would be good.
So when you review each topic, at least you'll have everybody's perspective.
So the issue there, in terms of the primary uses, that primary meaning, this is gonna be a solar farm, right? Or, so, you know, that I'm just doing this to create solar energy, not as an accessory to any of my business or to my residence.
It's the only thing on the property but trees.
Pretty much, okay. And so whether or not, where, I mean, okay, all right. So give that thought, if we care, if you want to say no to that anywhere, or if it should be by special permit or by right? Okay. Or site plan, okay. Anything else, other than approval of minutes?
Does, do we have any, are there people in the public, in the audience that would like to speak to?
Not at the moment, okay.
No, he's just here for the fun of it, all right.
I may have been closing down and didn't hear it, so the building height article, no one had any additional comment on that?
No.
So everything's been submitted as in the planning board report at this point, the Board of Selectmen recommendations, as well as yours, have been incorporated. So this is just kind of a running report now, I'll carry it to the next meeting. The only thing that I know of that changed was the description of the wireless, the explanation for the wireless. We specifically stated that it's going from 300 as required by Mass General Law to 500, so that previous, it was just that we're changing from Mass General Law to 500, so we specifically said 300 to 500. But other than that, everything's intact from what we talked about at the last meeting.
And the Board of Selectmen approved, or voted favorably in all our articles, other than the solar, which I believe they said they'd vote on at town meeting.
At town meeting, as well, yep.
Did it work too bad?
No.
Before minutes, there's a communication memo in the packet, related to establishing the working group for the Old Center zoning. As a result of that petition that was brought forward, we got in the textile museum, so I've sent that memo to, have you everybody seen it? The Chair of the Historical Commission, the Old Center Historical District Commission, the Old Center Realty Trust, and the North Andover Historical Society requested they add this to their agenda in May, and to submit a stakeholder name back. At the previous meeting, you have recommended John and Peter to sit on this. I also met with someone that is a, I guess it's a member of the Kachuk Lodge, the Masonic Lodge in the Old Center. He is sending that to his group, and I've asked for one of them to be a stakeholder as well, so they're privately owned in the B1 zone as well. Then my thoughts in terms of, once this group gets established, hopefully in May, they submit stakeholder names, we schedule something in June. These meetings would all be agenda-based, they'd be meeting minutes, they'd be public open meetings. We're gonna try to encourage any resident that wants to attend those meetings to attend, rather than name a resident on this working group, to just try to get as much public input as we can throughout the process.
That's what I was gonna ask about the list of people. We, I think, had mentioned at the last meeting, a resident of that Old Center area, and I understand your point, I think, about, of course, open to, you know, as many residents as want to, but, so...
Well, I think what might happen there, I think if we encourage them, there will be one or two that will just become almost de facto members, because they'll show up at every meeting, and...
I see, okay.
I agree.
I feel comfortable with that, I don't think we need to have the starting to remember that.
Yep, I agree. So I would anticipate by October, having, if there's gonna be a recommendation out of this working group to change anything, to hopefully wrap that up by October, so that in November, we're gonna start the public hearing process, I think, a lot earlier next year. So, I am gonna encourage anyone that wants a zoning article submitted to do that by December 1st. And I've lined that up, so that your public hearing process will be ahead of the warrant. So, that's kind of the timetable I put in this memo, and a few have responded back, they'll put it on, they've asked, you know, follow-up questions, what's this about? I thought it would be a little scary when people received this, in terms of just zoning in the Old Center in general, but for the most part, very positive comments and feedback.
And so everybody else, I think we're gonna change the September 18th meeting to September 25th, just so...
John, did you receive that email? I think you're the only one who didn't respond, so September 18th...
So you know, John, we're changing that.
Has moved to the 25th, and Bonnie has coordinated, scheduled in this room, and North Andover CAM, and all the details with that.
Okay, so, if someone want to make a motion to approve the minutes from our April 3rd meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the April 3rd meeting.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're in.